I would like to call the American Board of Education Board. Please stand for listening to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Take the vice notice.
In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided as follows. On February 3rd and April 14th, 2015, notice was sent to the home news Tribune, Star Ledger, local source, and the clerk of the municipality. By state law, there is no smoking permitted in this building at any time. In addition to the listed items in this agenda, this Board of Education may discuss and act upon other items not specifically referred to herein as is allowed at the regularly scheduled monthly board meeting under the sunshine law.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Orman?
Here.
Mr. Strizella?
Here.
Mr. Tapaleski?
Here.
Mr. Alvarez?
Here.
Mrs. Beviana?
Present.
Mrs. Birch?
Here.
Mrs. Hudak?
Here.
Mr. Colvis?
Here.
Mr. Russell?
Here.
I have a motion to approve the minutes of the special meeting dated March 19th, 2015, and the work session and regular meeting dated March 23rd, 2014.
So moved.
Mr. Tapaleski and Mrs. Orman? Uh, roll call, please.
Mrs. Orman?
Yes.
Mr. Strizella?
Yes.
Mr. Tapaleski?
Yes.
Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mrs. Beviana?
Yes.
Mrs. Birch?
Yes.
Mrs. Hudak?
Yes.
Mr. Colvis?
Yes.
Mr. Russell?
Yes.
Comments from the public on agenda items only. No agenda items. Agenda items only. Seeing none. Attorneys report, please.
Okay, we only have the one report tonight.
Okay, we have three items for action tonight. Item one, be it resolved at the board hereby by our first terms of a settlement agreement and general release between the board and employee number 19-1314, a copy of which is on file with the board secretary. Be it further resolved that the board president and secretary are hereby instructed to execute the agreement and are authorized to take all actions necessary to effectuate the terms of this agreement. Item two is be it resolved that the board hereby approves the terms of the settlement agreement and the general release between the board and the employee number 20-1314, a copy of which is on file in the board secretary. Be it further resolved that the board president and secretary are hereby instructed to execute the agreement and are authorized to take all actions necessary to effectuate the terms of the agreement. Item three, be it resolved that the board hereby approves the terms of the settlement agreement and general release between the board and employee number 211314, a copy of which is on file with the board secretary. Be it further resolved that the board president and secretary are hereby instructed to execute the agreement and are authorized to take all actions necessary to effectuate the terms of this agreement. Be it further resolved that upon approval of this agreement, employee 211314 will hereby be reassigned to a secretarial position within the district at sole and exclusive discretion of the superintendent and the board effective April 28th, 2015. May I ask for a second, please?
Second.
Roll call.
Mrs. Orman?
Yes.
Mr. Strizella?
Yes.
Mr. Tapaleski?
Yes.
Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mrs. Beviana?
Yes.
Mrs. Birch?
Yes.
Mrs. Hudak?
Yes.
Mr. Colvis?
Yes.
Mr. Russell?
Yes.
I apologize, Dr. Repitosi. Um, your report, please.
Oh, that's no problem, Mr. Russell. Thank you, uh, Mr. President. Uh, this evening, I'll start off with our monthly HIV report. Um, during the last month, we had thirty-three incidents reported in the district. Eight were validated as being HIV incidents, twelve were not, and thirteen were undetermined. The consequences for those incidents were warnings, counseling, office detention, and out-of-school suspension. And the victims in all instances were counseled. I have some good news to share with the board and the public. The New Jersey Department of Education has recently announced that the Linden Public School District has been selected to serve as a cohort two member of Innovate New Jersey. Innovate New Jersey is a central component of the DOE's new initiative to support, uh, school innovation across the state. So basically what it means is we've been selected, uh, as an innovative school district in the areas of technology in the state of New Jersey, primarily because of our one-to-one technology program with MacBook Air books and our teacher vanguard. Uh, so now by joining this cohort, we're part of a network of districts and schools throughout the state that share a passion for improving student outcomes through innovative instructional techniques. So it's a really big honor. We're only one of, uh, I think there's twenty...
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven districts in the whole state. There are six hundred and twelve school districts in the state of New Jersey. We're one of twenty-seven to be labeled as an innovative school district, so it's a really great honor. Now I want to talk about some really great people. The reason why all of those students in the back should be here tonight is for our teachers of the year who are here in the audience tonight. We also have some of our students who, um, some of our outstanding student athletes who have accomplished some amazing things tonight, so, uh, Mr. President, if you would join me, or if one of the board members would join me, we'll do the, uh, we'll do the students.
Mr. Alvarez and Mr. Birch, Mrs. Hudak. Mrs. Birch for track, Mr. Alvarez for wrestling, and then Mrs. Hudak will be the teachers.
So it's always an honor, uh, when we have these board meetings because we deal with a lot of, uh, a lot of policies and procedures and personnel issues. Uh, but what's really nice about coming to a board meeting is seeing some of our students and seeing some of our faculty here tonight. And, uh, first, we'd like to recognize some members of our varsity girls' track team. Um, we actually have four members of our team, uh, who are All-Americans. So I'd like to call them up individually, say a little word about each of them, uh, and call their coach up, uh, their coach who is an outstanding role model, who has excellent attendance, and who attends all the meetings, uh, that they go to. So first, is Chibu here? Chibu, hey, Chibu, come on up. He's a senior, and Chibu will be attending Albany University next year on a track scholarship. Chibu is currently the North Jersey Section Two Group Four State Champion in the fifty-five meter hurdle. She's broken our school record in the four-hundred-meter intermediate hurdle and is a member of several record-breaking relay teams, and she's also a two-time All-American. Chibu, you gotta stay up here, we'll do a picture, okay? Is Suzanne St. Germaine here? Suzanne is a senior who will be attending Saint Peters University on a track scholarship next year. Suzie's a member of the record-breaking shuttle hurdle relay team and the record-breaking four-by-two-hundred-meter relay team, as well as being a two-time All-American. Shaleah Spencer. Shaleah is also a senior and will be attending Saint Peters Uni...uh, excuse me, will be attending, uh, Cosmetology School. Maybe, Shaleah, can you help me do something here? Maybe add some hair or something? Shaleah is a member of the record-breaking shuttle hurdle relay team and also a two-time All-American. Ayana Jenkins. Ayana is only a junior, which we're thankful for because we have three seniors leaving who's gonna run hurdles next year. She's only been running hurdles for less than a year, is that true? She is one of the top sprinters in Union County, and Ayana is a member of the breaking of the record-breaking shuttle hurdle relay, four-by-one-hundred and four-by-two-hundred-meter relay teams, and she's a first-year All-American. And I'd like to ask their fearless leader, Coach Leon Devro, to come up. Coach Devro will make the most outstanding, um, role models that you can ask for a teacher to be in the Linden School District besides being an outstanding track coach. He is a tremendous artist and a, uh, a great art teacher. So congratulations, Coach, and congratulations, Leon Bailey. Is Dante Waldron here? Dante here? Dante got dressed up for the occasion, looking good. Dante, uh, won championships on our boys' track team in two events. In the high jump, he was the Union County Conference Champion, as well as the NJSIAA Section Two Group Four Champion. Uh, he was also the NJSIAA Section Two Group Four Fifty-five-meter high hurdle champion. Those are some tremendous accomplishments, congratulations. Is that Coach McDonald here? Coach McDonald, would you come up, please? I asked Coach to come up because he's gotta help me pronounce his name. Uh, I only know him as T Squared, is that correct? T Squared, would you come up? Takuzwa Taravenga, AKA T Squared. T Squared was the NJSIAA Section Two Group Four shot put champion. I mean, that is, I don't know if you realize, that is such a tremendous accomplishment for all of North Jersey's Section Two. Coach, please stay up here. Of course, you know, these two young men only can do so much through sheer athletic ability. I'm sure Coach McDonald taught you everything that you needed to know, right, guys? Coach Green is also here tonight. Coach, you wanna come up? It's, uh, it's great to have the coaches here tonight supporting their, uh, supporting our students, supporting their student athletes, so we're gonna take a picture. And, uh, last but certainly not least, is Dominic Robinson here tonight? Dominic was the, uh, this year, the NJSIAA District Eleven Champion, uh, which is a tremendous accomplishment in wrestling. The districts are...that's pretty far along the road in the competition. Dominic, what was your overall record?
Twenty-three and seventeen.
Twenty-three and seventeen, alright. So after the meeting tonight, we'll go down on the mat and show me a few things. I know I'm a little bit out of your weight class, but I think you can teach me some things. Uh, is Coach, uh, Coach, Coach Reynoso here? Coach Alvarez here? Coach, please come up. What's, what's really nice, I mean, we all recognize student athletes and things, but what I hear about, um, all of our students, I mean, they can't compete in athletics if they're not doing the right thing in the classroom, but I especially hear that, um, about Dominic, that Dominic is an excellent student who works really hard and does his best, so congratulations to you, Dominic, on your accomplishment for making, uh, the entire district proud. And, coaches, congratulations. So happy tonight that, uh, not only are we recognizing our teachers of the year and our educational, uh, support professionals, but I see that some of the administrators, principals have come out to support their teachers, and that's where I see. These teachers of the year that we're recognizing, um, they are really the people in our districts who, who go above and beyond. Some people can talk the talk, but these are the people who walk the walk. They do it every day, and they do a great job for us. These teachers were selected by, uh, a committee of educators and administrators because they really embody the virtues of the ideal teacher. And at tonight's meeting, we're gonna recognize them with a beautiful certificate from the Department of Education, and also, wait till you see it, a mug. We'll wait to call the first teacher up, and we'll have her show it to you. You're gonna be so impressed by this mug, I promise you. Maybe we can have another board member assist.
Mr. Tapaleski's on his way down, Mrs. Hudak. He'll back you up. Going around the, around the table here. Right, listen up. So, this is the first year the Department of Education has not only recognized teachers, but also educational support, uh, professionals. So I've been calling them up by school, teachers and also the ESPs from each school. The names are on there. So, from school number one, teacher of the year, Mrs. Hudak? Ms. Cindy Walker. Alright, I'm keeping her mug. I am keeping her mug. Uh, from school two...okay, you already told me you couldn't come. He said I could have his. From school number four, I see Mr. Catalin is in the audi...audience tonight. Mr. Catalin, thank you for being here, and I'd like to recognize my former student, Roxanna Suggs. Ms. Suggs, would you come up, please? Show everybody your mug. Kristi, get a close-up of the mug. Oh, she's mine, she's not...I skipped four, I skipped you. Show everybody the mug. Now stay up here because we're gonna take a group shot. I miss school four. Uh, school four is Danielle Cassino. Did I pronounce your name correctly, Danielle? I did. From school number six, uh, Ms. Carson couldn't be here tonight. From school number eight, Ms. Lizzie Ortiz. From school number nine, Ms. Toni Perez. And from school number ten, Ms. Lori De Marza. From... From Soul Middle School, Elizabeth O'Lofflin. From McManus, Ms. Gwen Long. Alright, Ms. Long. And from Linden High School, Patricia Tardavina. So we're gonna take a picture with the teachers of the year first, and then we'll do the ed service professional. Thank you. So our educational service professionals are those, uh, professionals other than teachers. They may be teachers, but they may be nurses, they may be social workers, they may be instructional coaches, uh, they're the people in the school that do just about everything and anything. And this is the first year that the Department of Ed is recognizing them, uh, and so we're very honored to have them here tonight also. School one, she's not here. Mug for her. Is Kristen Kosmasevsky here? How did I do with that name, Kristen? Did I do well? Kosmasevsky? No? Good, right? That's correct. From school five, Stella Zatko, our nurse. I don't know who put these in order. You're picking, they're all ones, Mr. Tapaleski. From school number six, Jamie Bott. Jamie is a school social worker. From school number eight, Ms. Patricia Kowalski. From school number ten, another one of my former students, Alicia Dennis. From McManus Middle School, Nurse Elizabeth Radel. And from Linden High School is Kathy Volker here.
For those teachers in the audience that didn't, uh, get selected this year, you too can get a mug if you work really, really hard. But in all seriousness, congratulations to our teachers of the year, our educational support professionals of the year. Uh, thank you for all you do for our students every single minute. And, Mr. President, that concludes my report.
Ladies and gentlemen, we need to continue our meeting. If you can take your conversations to outside of the hallway, please. We appreciate that, thank you very much. Curriculum instruction report, Mrs. Beviana?
The curriculum instruction committee, upon recommendation of the superintendent of schools and the assistant superintendent, present the following fifty-eight motions to the Linden Board of Education for approval. Items one through eight approve the enrollment and termination of out-of-district placements and home instruction services, the adjustment of tuition, the payment for related services as per child study team evaluations, and the transportation of students. Item nine, grant permission to submit an amendment in 2015 IDEA application. Ten and eleven approve the 2015 extend school year programs and summer remedial programs. Item twelve and thirteen approve home instruction services provided by outside vendors. Fourteen approves the payment schedule for extracurricular activities for the 2015-16 school year. Item fifteen approves the schedule of payments to district employees for working extracurricular activities. Sixteen grants permission to begin athletic practice sessions on the dates listed. Seventeen and eighteen approve enrollment of Linden High School in the NJSIAA that authorizes the payment of annual dues. Items nineteen and twenty approve the participation of Linden High School. Item twelve and thirteen approve home instruction services provided by outside vendors. Fourteen approves the payment schedule for extracurricular activities for the 2015-16 school year. Item fifteen approves the schedule of payments to district employees for working extracurricular activities. Sixteen grants permission to begin athletic practice sessions on the dates listed. Seventeen and eighteen approve enrollment of Linden High School in the NJSIAA that authorizes the payment of annual dues. Items nineteen and twenty approve the participation of Linden High School in the football playoffs and wrestling championships in accordance with the regulations of NJSIAA. Items twenty-one and twenty-two grant permission for the athletic department to conduct summer weight training sessions and voluntary workout sessions for student athletes. Number twenty-three amends board action on past curriculum and instruction reports. Item twenty-four through twenty-seven grants permission for use of facilities and school activities. Twenty-eight approves district pool field trips. Twenty-nine through thirty-two approve training for district staff. Item thirty-three approve salaries from the 2014-15 Twenty First Century Community Learning Center grant. Item thirty-four and thirty-five recognize the Gradual Teachers of the Year and Educational Service Professionals of the Year in their respective schools. Item thirty-six grants permission for delayed store time to Linden High School due to park testing. Thirty-seven improves the back to school nights for the 2015-16 school year. Items thirty-eight, forty-two, forty-three, and forty-four grant approval for the persons listed to conduct research studies and analyze data in various Linden schools for the Lindens' Leaders to Leaders Program, Rutgers Medical School, and Rutgers University. Item thirty-nine grants approval to sign the Memorandum of Understanding between the Linden Public Schools and Educatus International. Item forty approves the therapy resources to provide speech services for students. Forty-one approves the administration of the World Language Stamp Test. Forty-five grants permission for the Linden High School students into the intro of education class to participate in internship experiences at the district elementary schools. Forty-six authorizes a cooperative partnership agreement between Linden High School and Xiamen Foreign Language School in Xiamen, China. Item forty-seven approved the 2015 summer reading list for the Linden Public Schools. Items forty-eight, forty-nine, and fifty grant approval for exchange programs to Germany and France and the International Learn and Serve Project to Italy. Item fifty-one grants approval for the family community development cooperations to conduct the pilot tutoring program after school and during summer sessions. Items fifty-two, fifty-three, and fifty-four approve the 2015-16 marking period dates, distribution dates, and parent teacher conference dates. Items fifty-five and fifty-six approve the 2015-16 12-month employee calendar and summer hours for 2015. Item fifty-seven proclaims the week of May 4th through 8th as National Teacher Appreciation Week to be celebrated in the Linden Public Schools. Item fifty-eight approves the superintendent's determination and actions taken for all reported incidents of harassment, intimidation, and bullying discussed as of March 23rd, 2015, regular board meeting.
Mr. President, I move curriculum and instruction items one through fifty-eight. Respectfully ask for a second. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Orman?
Yes.
Mr. Struzel?
Yes.
Mr. Tapalovsky?
Yes.
Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mrs. Bemia?
Yes.
Mrs. Birch?
Yes.
Mrs. Hudeck?
Yes.
Mr. Colbus?
Yes, on all, but I abstained on forty-two.
Mr. Russell?
Yes. Thank you, Mrs. Viviana. Management Operations, Mrs. Hudeck?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. The Management Operations Committee upon recommendation of superintendent of schools presents the following 33 motions to the Linden Board of Education for approval. Number one is the passing of president employee Barbara Sorenson. Dr. Robitussi.
Thank you, Mrs. Hudeck. We unfortunately lost Mrs. Sorenson too early. She was a teacher at Soul Middle School for the last seventeen years and was tragically taken from us last month after an illness. She is missed tremendously by her colleagues and students. In addition, Linden lost a legend last week when Thomas Hoagland passed away. Mr. Hoagland worked for the Linden Board of Education for thirty years as a physical education teacher at the high school. On behalf of the district, I'd like to offer our most heartfelt sympathies to their families and our thoughts and prayers with them.
Thank you, Dr. Robitussi. Number three is the retirement of eleven employees of the Robitussi.
I guess it's that time of year. We could, I did something to make them all go, or it's just that, maybe they're scared of the government. I'm thinking that's more likely what it is. But we're losing some good people here, but for a good reason, retiring. Celia DeCosta has worked for the Linden Board of Education as a paraprofessional for twenty-seven years. Bob Dallinger has worked for the Linden Board of Education, all of his years at school nine for the past thirty years. Sue Fagan has worked for the Linden Board of Education for twenty-five years as a school nurse, and she was the head school nurse for the last nine years. Rosalie Hisch has worked for the Linden Board of Ed for twenty years, seventeen years as a special education teacher, and the last three years at school five as a developmental reading teacher. Glenda Lee has worked for the Board of Ed for twenty-six years, all at school two as a paraprofessional. Pat Josephik has worked her entire career teaching fourth grade at school six all of twenty-five years. Geraldine Miskowitz has worked for the Board of Ed for sixteen years, all at school six also, and all in fourth grade. Roberta Miller has worked as a secretary for the Board of Ed for the past twenty years. She began her career at the high school, worked most of her career at the technology department, and the last two were at special services. Lois Rubuskas has been a secretary for the Linden Board of Ed for twenty-three years and worked as a parent for two years, so for a total of twenty-five years. Angela Stewart has worked for the Board of Ed for fourteen years as a fifth grade teacher at school ten. And Kathy Williams has worked for the Board of Ed for thirty-six years as a kindergarten teacher, all at school nine. I'd like to wish all of those employees a healthy, happy retirement, and hope they're retired much longer than they've had to work.
Thank you, Dr. Robitussi. Number four is to amend pass board action. Number five is the resignation of staff. Numbers six, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, twenty-four, twenty-eight, and thirty-one are appointment of staff. Number eight is the transfer of staff. Number thirteen is the reappointment of staff. Number fourteen is to approve not offering an employment contract for the 2015-16 school year to the non-tenure professional staff members that are listed in the hands of each board member for reasons of declined enrollment tenure, staff returning from leave, budget approval status federal and state funding, enrollment factors, reorganization adjustments, and staff assignments, or to other reasons allowed by law. Number fifteen is to approve the recommendation of superintendent for employee zero-six, fourteen, fifteen to return to work effective April 13, 2015. Appointing person listed as chairperson of the superintendent scholarship funded no cost to the district. Number seventeen is to authorize the payment to the estate of Barbara Sorenson. Number eighteen is to compensate the staff listed for unused vacation and sick days upon retirement as per negotiated contract. Number nineteen is to authorize the execution of the annual employment agreement for the 2015-16 school year for unclassified personnel listed per established pay formula associated guidance step. Number twenty is to reappoint and award employment contract to the non-tenure certificated staff listed for the 2015-16 school year, paying terms and conditions established per the negotiated collective bargaining agreements. Part A is ten months staff, and part B, I believe, is twelve months staff. I'm sorry. Twenty-two is the reappointment of the following secretary of staff for the 2015-16 school year for the secretary of personnel listed per negotiated agreement. Number twenty-three is the reappointment of the following staff for the 2015-16 school year per negotiated agreement. Number twenty-five is the approval to conduct a sixth grade orientation program at McManus on 5/13/15 and Soul Middle School on May 13th for current fifth grade students who will be promoted to the sixth grade for the 2015-16 school year with the salary listed. Number twenty-six is to authorize the collection and donation of sick days for the employee that is listed. Number twenty-seven is to approve summer hours for the following staff members to refurbish science kits for the 2015-16 school year and set up the new location for the Science Resource Center. Staff will be paid for their contractual rate costs not to exceed $3,000. Number twenty-nine is to approve the following revised job description. Number thirty is to approve the following new job description. And number thirty-two is to approve the payment for the salaries for the 2015 IDEA basic grants as listed. Number thirty-three is to approve the payment of salaries for the 2015 IDEA preschool grant as listed. Mr. President, I approve items one through thirty-three. Respectfully ask for a second.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Orman?
Yes.
Mr. Struzel?
Yes.
Mr. Tapalovsky?
Yes.
Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mrs. Viviana?
Yes.
Mrs. Birch?
Yes.
Mrs. Hudeck?
Yes.
Mr. Colbus?
Yes.
Mr. Russell?
Yes. Thank you, Mrs. Hudeck. Support Operations, Mr. Tapalovsky?
Thank you, Mr. President. Support Operations Committee upon recommendation of superintendent of schools and business administrator board secretary present the following 30 finance motions and eight facilities motions to the Board of Education for approval. Items one through six are regular board business dealing with acceptance of the business administrator board secretary certifications as of March 31st, 2015. Board secretary's monthly financial report appropriation section, and upon consultation with the appropriate district official certifies that, to the best of our knowledge, no major account or fund has been over expended in violation of NJAC 6A 23-2.11A, and that sufficient funds are available to meet the district's financial obligations for the remainder of the fiscal year. Secretary's report for the month of March 2015, authorization for payments of salaries and supplemental payroll for April 2015, jewel warrants in the amounts of specified in favor of person's name, and a list of transfers and adjustments for the month of March 2015, attached list of transfers and adjustments for the month of March 2015. Item seven is a treasurer's report for the month of March 2015. Item eight, student activities report, Linden High School for the month of March 2015. Item nine is to amend board actions on past operations in the finance report from May 2014 and February 2015. Item ten, authorize superintendent business administrator board secretary to implement 2015-16 budget pursuant to local and state policies. Items eleven through fifteen are to accept funds in the amount of $2,874,564 from the State of New Jersey Department of Education for the ECPA preschool aid for the 2015-16 school year. $1,260 under chapter 193 for the 2014-15 school year. $395 for school for K kids representing proceeds for the Valentine bouquet and youth book sale. $20 from the State of New Jersey probation administration representing student restitution. $7.10 from McAvee, Burke, and Sinicky, Clark, New Jersey in payment of open request. Items sixteen through twenty-three are to approve payment for hearing transcripts for the matter of the Linden Board of Education versus employee nineteen-thirteen-four and $24,000, excuse me, $24,178 and 23 cents to the Kennelworth Board of Education for reimbursement for choice student transportation services for 2014-15 school year. $2,902 to ER&amp;M, Inc., Fairwood, New Jersey for environmental support at McManus on March 17th, 2015. $327,000 for Spark Construction, Oakhurst, New Jersey for exterior spec of replacement in Linden High School, based on low bid received April 21st, 2015. Kennelworth Board of Education coordinate transportation services for Linden students attending the Kennelworth Choice Program at David Brerly Middle and High School for the 15-16 school year. Use of one Linden Board of Education bus and driver to assist in transporting, transporting project graduation participants from the Gregorio Center on Helen Street to Woodbridge Community Center, 600 Main Street, Woodbridge on Tuesday evening, June 23rd, 2015, and back on Wednesday, June 24th. Annual maintenance and renewal of the amount of $3,100 with art land payment services solutions Princeton for district-wide POS system, renewal of lease agreement, and with the Elks Club for the period of September 1st, 2015 through June 30th, 2016, the amount of $1,000 per month for the use of the parking lot during the hours of 7:30 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., Monday through Friday. Item twenty-four is to approve the following resolution permitting Linden High School Bam Paris Club to be the operator of a freshman stand at football games for the 2015 season. Item twenty-five is to approve the following for the 2015-16 school year in accordance with NJAC 6A:23A-18.5. The Linden Board doesn't require Concordia Learning Center to charge students for the reduced or paid deals for the 15-16 school year. And item twenty-six is to approve the following with New Roads School, which did not apply for receive or receive funding for the child nutrition program, and that they are not to charge students. Item twenty-seven approves the following renewal of bus routes for student transportation for the 15-16 school year with, for regular students, DAPR bus company, First Children, and Valani Bus Company. For a parent for a special ed route and extended school trip, extended school year transportation for special ed, the J&amp;J transportation, and Valani for 54 passenger school bus for field trips for the 15-16 school year. Item twenty-eight is student transportation services for 2015-16. Eight bids were mailed, one was received, excuse me, two were received, and item two, eight bids were mailed, one received, they were all awarded to Valani Bus Company. Twenty-five is agent rotation listed for uniform, for custodian maintenance for next year. The opening date was April 21st, and it's awarded to Julius in Linden. Item thirty is the according following listed as surplus equipment to be disposed of of the accordance of mission policy 3260. There are eight items in facilities, item one through six, the use of facilities at no charge as requested by the president of the full school, one, Al Plummer, president of the school, two, Aron Zaire, McManus Middle School, Anthony Cataline, school four, M. Rodriguez, school five, Al Forse, Financial Professional Associate, Prudential College Funding 101, and Barbara Greco Brady, president of Mystic Vision Players. Items seven and eight are use of facilities at a service charge as requested by J. Owusu, J.O.C.P.R. Game Changers, and A. Burgos, parent, and K. Jonas Nunes, owner of America's Finest Karate and Kick Boxing Academy. Mr. President, if there are any questions or further discussions, I move items one through thirty of the finance agenda and one through eighty facilities for approval, and respectfully seek a second.
Second. Roll call.
Mrs. Orman?
Yes.
Mr. Struzel?
Yes.
Mr. Tapalovsky?
Yes.
Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mrs. Viviana?
Yes.
Mrs. Birch?
Yes.
Mrs. Hudeck?
Yes.
Mr. Colbus?
Yes.
Mr. Russell?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Tapalovsky. Planning and policy, Mrs. Orman?
Thank you, Mr. President. The Planning and Policy Committee upon recommendation of the superintendent of schools submits the following policies for first reading to incorporate new features required by court and law and to elaborate on local district policies. First reading, we have policy 4115, supervision, there are changes throughout the policy for updates to professional development requirements under Teach and J. Policy 4123, classroom aides slash paraprofessionals, and 4222, non-instructional aides. It added content explaining new requirements for statements of assurance to the ECS. 5131.1, harassment, intimidation, and bullying has been revised to add sections for parents to participate in the HIV interview process and parents who attempt to deny access to their child for the HIV interview process. Policy 5148.8, sports-related concussions and head injuries, it's revised to include cheerleaders with student athletes and consolidate some of the content. 5142.21, administered medication, added two new sections, emergency administration of epinephrine for first-time allergic reactions at school and liability. Policy 6114, emergencies and disaster preparedness.
Policy sixty-one fourteen, emergencies and disaster preparedness, added sections called school safety and security plan. Policy sixty-one forty-five point one and sixty-one forty-five point two, intramural competition, interscholastic competition, added artistic expression and revised special education students to be included with reasonable accommodations. Sixty-one seventy-three, home instruction. There are changes throughout to reflect recent changes in law and code, most significantly the ability for districts to use online educational programs. Policy seventy-one ten, long-range facility planning, changes are made to reflect requirements of the L.R.F.P. I submit these, um, policies for first reading and humbly ask for a second.
Second.
Robal.
Mrs. Orman?
Yes.
Mr. Struzella?
Yes.
Mr. Tapaleski?
Yes.
Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mrs. Viviana?
Yes.
Mrs. Birch?
Yes.
Mrs. Hudeck?
Yes.
Mr. Calabas?
Yes.
Mr. Russell?
Yes. Thank you, Mrs. Orman. State delegate, Mr. Tapaleski?
Uh, there will be a meeting of the Senate Assembly in May.
Thank you, Mr. Tapaleski. County delegate, Mr. Struzella?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, I have a report. The Union County meetup took place at Berkeley Heights at Governor Livingston High School. Present with Dr. Robertosi, Yelena Horre, Linden High School principal, Rochelle Crowley, Linden High School guidance counselor, Annabelle Lewis, Linden High School social worker, and Anise Mesut-Due, senior at Linden High School. Linden was well represented when the unsung heroes of Union County. Seventeen school districts were presented with awards. The unsung heroes program seeks to recognize high school seniors who have overcome difficult academic or personal challenges, who model good citizenship, or who exhibit a quiet spirit and strength that inspires others. These students are often overlooked under more traditional guidelines. One senior from each district is invited to attend this program. The students selected will be asked to share their stories and inspirations for the future. I found that these students are the best of the best. They are not afraid of a core or part test or any test whatsoever. Their future is assured for them after college. They came with their parents and school representatives. These students will have an impact on our country's future. All of the schools were proud of their students, knowing that their hard work paid dividends. All of these students received an award and acclamation from their school. Some of the students became emotional after receiving their award. A very warm and inspirational speech was given by Mrs. Annabelle Lewis, our Linden High School social worker, who spoke about Anise Mesut-Due's hard work to achieve this great honor. The school administration is very proud of her. I also attended Union County Vocational Technical School Annual Advisory Board Dinner, which I have been a member for the last six years. As always, as a graduate, I'm always impressed with the display of their artistic abilities. This concludes my report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Struzella. Head Services Commission, Mrs. Orman?
Uh, no report, Mr. President, thank you.
Thank you. Negotiations Committee, Mrs. Viviana?
We are currently negotiating with the custodial maintenance team and our next meeting is May fourth.
Thank you, Mrs. Viviana. EST for students, Mr. Tapaleski?
Uh, no report at this time.
Thank you. EST for special ed, Mrs. Hudeck?
Thank you, Mr. President. There will be a meeting for the parents, um, on, on May the twelfth and it will be held at six-thirty at the Special Education Office.
Thank you. Any board member comments or new business?
Board member comments?
Mrs. Orman?
Okay, well, first of all, I'd just like to congratulate the high school PTA on an amazing tricky trade that they had, um, Saturday. It was fun. I didn't win anything, but it was just fun. It was a great night out and it was great to see so much of our staff, um, present supporting the PTA. I also too would make a comment that our students are absolutely amazing. Um, our student athletes are just continuing to just impress me with some of their athletic achievements and I just think it's really wonderful, um, that the coaches are so behind them and just a, a pat on the back to the parents as well because behind every successful child is usually some mommy or daddy or a grandparent or guardian that is really pushing them and driving them. But I'd also like to say on that particular note that, um, I was extremely disappointed to see so many of our students in the audience for the wrong reason. I want this to be a teachable moment to our staff. We all make mistakes. We all use bad judgment with things that we do, but it is never okay to get our children involved. If you want to get your parents, the parents to rally behind you, if you want to get your coworkers to rally behind you and state your cause, that is great, but it is never, under any circumstance, okay to drag children into your nonsense, is what I'm going to call it. I have zero tolerance for that. Absolutely unacceptable. But I would also like to say congratulations to the teachers and staff that are retiring. I did a little quick total and there's over three hundred years experience that we are going to be losing in a blink of an eye. So congratulations and best wishes to all of the retirees and just to Mrs. Williams, um, at school nine. Well, everybody else calls me, calls me Mrs. Orman. She always, always refers to me as Auntie Lisa because I pick my nieces and nephews up frequently from school, so I am going to miss her and her saying, oh, hi, Auntie Lisa, there are the kids. So I just want to wish her well and everyone else. That is all.
Thank you, Mrs. Orman. Mrs. Hudeck?
Yeah, I have, um, a couple, uh, comments I'd like to make. First off, there's two graduates that, from Linden High School, that, um, over the weekend received awards. The first one is Anthony Walrath, who graduated in two thousand and twelve and he was awarded the Gerald B. Schreiber Scholarship for Entrepreneurship, uh, with a major with outstanding academic achievement at Roman University and Rover, Rover College of Business. And also a young man who graduated, uh, in two thousand and thirteen, Joshua Negren. He grad, well, he graduated in two thousand and thirteen and he's a sophomore this year at, uh, Stevens Institute in Hoboken. He's very involved in many of the activities on campus and even began his own group named Men's Development Initiative for groups that helped to diminish the stereotypes of men and also increase the importance of being a human being to oneself and others. He was awarded, uh, Saturday Emerging Leaders Award for being one of the most involved student activity, in student activities and was the guest speaker at lunch, at the scholarship luncheon, where he spoke on his experiences as, as a minority growing up and how he was able to still accomplish so much with hard work and determination and passion to reach his goals. Um, he has come back to Linden High School and has spoken to the students in the IB class, which he is a product of. And he has encouraged them not to quit because the program is pretty tough for them at times and they do want to give up. But he was, he was pursued and he survived and he did not quit. And, uh, he is an IB graduate and the program definitely made him stronger and made, gave him the confidence to pursue his ambitions. So congratulations to both of those gentlemen. I also would like to, um, talk about the retirees. There's a few of them on there that, um, really kind of touch my heart. School six is my home school and has been for a very, very long time. Mrs. Giuseppe, um, I hate to correct you, but I'm going. Mrs. Giuseppe worked PTA with me when I first went over to school six, way back in the old days, and she was the PTA president. So, um, but she started there, but she was lucky to get a job, but she started in school two, she taught kindergarten for one year and then she came back home to school six. And she taught fourth grade, where she has been for twenty-four years. So, um, but she's been there and she even taught my daughter as well. Jerry Miskowitz is my family science buddy and, um, even though she hasn't been a team member for family science for all the years that family science has been on Friday night at school since, I think she's been there nine or ten years that she's done it with Mrs. Slager. That is an awesome program for Friday and I do kitchen duty and I have, I catch up with them, but not as many and I've, Mr. Tapaleski and Dr. Robertosi and Mr. Calabas has also been there for kitchen duty, but it's, it's an awesome program and it's a, it's a great family night and, um, it's, it's a nice thing and Jerry has worked tirelessly along with it for the past nine, ten years. So congratulations, congratulations to her on her retirement. And Mrs. Williams, I started my school career when she was at school, right? And her mother was a teacher at school six and she always told me, Mrs. Hudeck, yeah, JJ had a good beginning with my daughter Kathy, who's a kindergarten teacher and she was an awesome teacher and still is. And her mom was an awesome teacher at school five. So congratulations to her on her retirement. I hope she, they, all of them enjoy it. And there's another special lady on here too, Lois Rambuskis, a great lady, and she's going to be missed in the board office as well. But I congratulate everyone that's retiring, wish them a lot of health and happiness.
Thank you, Mrs. Hudeck. Mrs. Birch?
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I would like to say congratulations to all retirees. Two very special people on the, um, retirement list is Mr. Dallinger. He is a teacher over at school nine and I had the pleasure of being the PTA president there for the past, uh, eight and a half years and I've worked with him. He also had my son, wonderful teacher, involved, always doing the right thing for the children, um, has their best interested heart, takes them outside, uh, gets their energy going, does so many great things with them and he definitely will be missed. Mrs. Williams, she had all three of the Birch children, God bless her heart. Wonderful, loving, caring, uh, just phenomenal teacher who's going to be desperately missed at our school and, um, I'm sad to see her go, but I know she's got other things on her list that she's ready to do and I wish her the best. So that concludes my report. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Birch. Mr. Tapaleski?
Yeah. When the attendance issue was discussed, I refrained from making any comments and probably wouldn't have until someone, uh, brought up the fact that, uh, Mr. Cosby spent countless hours doing the play with nothing to show for it. Well, he was paid for it. That's his job. How many hours he spends is determined by him, but he knows how much he's doing it for. So the fact that he puts in all that time, fine, I mean, but if it puts that much stress on you, maybe you ought to not do it. Well, that's, you know, that's just a fact of life. I was involved in those things. I know the amount of time it takes. My, uh, my daughter, uh, has directed plays, so it happens. On the lighter side, I too, uh, want to congratulate all those people who are retiring. Having done that myself, you got a lot of fun in store and, uh, the one that comes to mind is, uh, Mrs. Rambuskis. Lois, I don't know who I'm going to talk to now when I go to the board office. I mean, I spend all the time talking to her about her daughter and now her, her grandchild because her and my son and daughter all went to dance school at one of their school of dance and, uh, it's been a long time, you know? Our kids are in their thirties now, so it's been a while. So congratulate to all those and all the teachers of the year and, uh, the, what are they, what's that new category now?
The Educational Service Professionals.
Educational Super, uh, Services Professionals. Those are the people that not enough people get involved with. They don't know what they do and so it's nice to see them recognized. Uh, that concludes my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Tapaleski. Anyone on this side? Going back to Mrs. Hudeck?
I just have one thing. I just wanted to clarify my vote on, um, curriculum on twenty-nine. I just really just needed to abstain on making a move. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, and I'll just give a quick, uh, congratulations to the boys and girls track, um, athletes that were here tonight and their coaches, what a great job that they did. Our wrestler on his district championship again, um, as Mr. Dr. Robertosi said, it's something that doesn't come very easy, so again, congratulations to, uh, to him and to all the teachers and the education professionals on their teacher of year awards, uh, you know, just a, a great achievement for each one of them and, uh, we're so glad that they were able to come here tonight and be recognized. Reminder to board members and also for the public that our next Board of Education meeting will be located back at the Central Administration Office in the conference room, two East Givens Street, uh, for the remainder, uh, May through the, uh, August meetings will all be held at the admin building and not here, uh, Linden High School. Anyone further, uh, from members?
I just have one, uh, small issue, Mr. Russell, I wanted to bring to the attention of the board. The Planning and Policy Committee has been having, uh, some serious discussions about the dress code, uh, the student dress code for next year. So, uh, we're going to continue those discussions, uh, over the next few weeks. Uh, I anticipate bringing in the principals to get their input on, uh, if there, they, there should be revisions and if so, what they should be, uh, or if we just leave it the same. Uh, and I will invite the board members to hear, uh, what the principals have to say because I think their voice is extremely important. And then if we do what we discussed earlier, have Committee of the Whole for committee meetings, uh, in May for that Thursday night, uh, that would probably be a good time for the entire board to discuss, uh, any proposed changes. So the goal would be the next few weeks, we'll really research the issue, we'll dig into it, we'll get the principals' input and then a Committee of the Whole, we can discuss it.
Thank you, Dr. Robertosi. Now is the time for the actual public, uh, comments from the public. Is there anyone that would like to speak, uh, from the public? Okay. Seeing none, may have a motion to adjourn.
I'll move.
Second. All in favor? Aye. You need to adjourn. Thank you very much.